Back for a minute or so late, I apologize for that. This is the planning board. And I think, no, I don't know everybody here. So down, you have John Druley, Bob Larry, Jim Fox, Charlotte Harris.
Pat.
Pat. And Paul.
We should explain to anybody who's watching that.
Right, I keep mixing up Pat and Pam.
I'm frequently called Pam by a lot of people.
The actual, real Pam is not here tonight and will not be joining us. So it'll be just the six of us, and that's the way it'll be. Minutes, Paul?
Yes. Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of March 26, 2024, April 8, 2024, and April 23, 2024.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All approved. Okay, going backwards slightly, public comment. Is anyone here to speak to us about something not on the agenda? No, so that's a public comment. This is going to be a relatively short meeting. There's not that much on the agenda. The first thing that we're going to be looking at is an A&R, an approval not required, and the address for this place, I'll be able to read in a minute. 187 Penzance Road Trust, Cindy Coats trustee, plan of land to create two new lots at 187 Penzance Road. And if you're going to speak, could you please give your name, and then tell us what we need to know?
Certainly. My name is Jake Fricki. I'm here with Cape and Islands Engineering. Tonight, we're looking at an A&R plan for a division of a fairly large parcel at the end of Penzance Road. The parcel currently has two dwellings on it, and the idea here is that we're cutting the lot into two lots which each have their own dwelling on it. We feel that this qualifies as an A&R because they each have sufficient frontage on a private way, which was in existence prior to Falmouth adopting the subdivision control law, and that private way, we feel, has sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction. Each of the lots has more than enough lot area to meet current zoning regs and sufficient width as well.
Hey, my question for you, because of the odd shape of the new lots, where is the frontage on the road?
So this is Penzance Road here, and the frontage for parcel 1A is here, and the frontage for parcel 1B is here.
Is that why that dog leg was created?
That is correct.
Right, and my other question is, it looks as if much as of the new lot is marshland or a pond, so I assume it's unbuildable. Does that still count?
The remaining upland area of Lot 1A is still 2.4 acres, and so it's more than sufficient to meet the current zoning regulations, which are 80,000 square feet, I believe.
In that neighborhood, right. Was that formerly the Clark House?
It was.
Yeah. Oh, it's a wonderful piece of land. Any questions from the board? Let's start down with you, John.
More questions?
Well, Jim?
No questions.
Pat?
I'm just assuming that it's okay for both of the existing buildings to be using the same septic system.
They're not actually using the same septic system. There's a separate system for each, but what we're showing is a septic easement for the larger house because the septic system does come across the line.
And Paul?
No comment.
I recommend endorsement.
Okay. Pat, if you would?
Okay. I move that we endorse the proposed subdivision of the land without regard to buildability or compliance with zoning.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks so much.
You're done, thank you very much.
Just a technical question. We really don't have anything to say about the septic system, right?
No.
No, I was just wondering.
No, I was just wondering if, you got me thinking.
I ask questions.
No, I'm saying, why don't we do it? I was just, I just, that's, okay, fine.
No, that would be it.
It was a personal question.
Yeah, I just wondered.
I was wondering, because I didn't think it was a good idea, but it's another business.
Oh.
Right?
No, but it's still interesting.
It's interesting, yeah.
Interesting, okay. Next up, we have a public meeting. This is back to the bank, the Chase Bank, for Stonefield Engineering and Design, site plan review application, to construct a 3,432-square-foot bank with a drive-through ATM along parking improvements at 13 Davis Straits.
Sorry. He's ready for the next one.
Excuse me?
Not me.
Oh.
He's eager to get to the next one.
He's ready.
Excuse me, I kind of will.
Madam Chair, if I may, the applicant just this morning sent in a request to continue the matter until May 28, your next meeting, and they've also sent in a request to extend the decision deadline to May 31.
Okay, so we need a motion to that effect.
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just have one question. The email mentions extension to May 31. The next meeting's May 28.
It's the decision deadline, so it's extending that decision deadline to the 31st to incorporate your next meeting of the 28th.
Okay. Okay.
Six oh?
Correct.
Six oh?
Yes, it was. I don't think that you're next up either. I think that, are you doing H. Dennis Toner III site plan review? You are, okay. To construct a detached accessory apartment at 452 Davisville Road.
Madam Chair. Notice.
A notice?
Yeah. Notice that this public meeting was published on 4/28/24, and nineteen of Butters were notified by regular mail.
Do we have a Butters here? No, we do not. Okay, Mr. Clower?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Kevin Clower, I'm an attorney here in town at Amen Clower, LLP, and I am before you tonight representing the applicants, Dennis and Karen Toner, the owners of 452 Davisville Road. I'm joined by Mr. Toner this evening. We are applying for site plan review for detached accessory apartment. This will also require approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals. We're scheduled to be before the ZBA on June 6, and also the Historical Commission, which has already reviewed and approved this project. This property is located at the very southern end of Davisville Road, very close to the Minot intersection. The lot itself is just over 35,000 square feet, it's Zone Residential B, and it presently contains a single-family dwelling with six bedrooms, an existing detached barn, which has habitable space within, an existing garage, and a pool. We are requesting site plan review to convert a portion of the existing barn to an accessory dwelling unit pursuant to 246.6B. In connection with this proposal, they're proposing to remove a portion of the existing garage, the garage space on the existing barn at the eastern end of the building, which will be rebuilt as habitable space. The proposed accessory dwelling unit will repurpose the existing barn. A portion of the second floor, well, the entirety of the second floor, and the entrance from the first floor, will actually remain dedicated as accessory habitable space to the first, to the primary dwelling. So what we're talking about as the accessory dwelling is this portion of the building here, and one bedroom located there, and include a significant improvement to the exterior aesthetics of the barn. The applicant does presently have a denatification system, which is reflected in your health, referral from the Health Department, and they are proposing an expansion of that existing system. There's no impact on conservation. It is in line with zoning requirements. Resulting lot coverage by structure is 13.55%, where 20 is allowed by right, and the lot coverage by structure paving and parking is 25.95%, far below the allowable thresholds. While it's not necessarily a concern of the planning board, it does improve the existing non-conforming side yard setback from 5.3 to 9.6. The proposal meets all requirements for accessory apartments within the bylaw, the lots more than 7,500 square feet, principal dwelling is owner-occupied, there is one proposed bedroom in the ADU. The ADU itself is 761 square feet, which is approximately 20% of the primary structure. The bylaw allows for up to 800 square feet, or 40% of the primary structure. And though a portion of the lot is within the Costa Pond overlay district, they are currently utilizing a denatification system. And further, it meets all the design standards set forth in the bylaw. I believe that this is what the board intended in passing the ADU bylaw, it's a repurpose, it's repurposing existing accessory structures to make them more useful, and in this case, we're providing additional habitable space and one bedroom ADU. I believe that you can and should approve this, and I'd be happy to address any questions that the board might have at this time.
It appears to meet every requirement, and it's been around to all the offices. Are there any comments from the board?
I would love, no.
I have just a question, it's a septic system question, sorry. Is it, I read the plans, is this just a module that they just add on to the system?
Yeah, basically, you add on to, from...
It looked like, really, like, wow, that's pretty cool, they just put...
So I get in trouble when I start talking engineering.
Me too, I just asked the question.
And the engineers get real mad at me when I start talking engineering. My understanding is that you can add on to the SAS system.
I was reviewing the plans, I said, wow, that's pretty cool, thanks, I just...
What does that mean? You just dig a bigger hole and put it in?
Their system is for whatever they need for bedrooms, they need one more bedroom, they just put a little, like a module, plug it in, catch it, go.
So if you look at the septic plan, Ms. Harris, it shows a new distribution line and a top-load second chamber being added, so they're going to match the existing SAS system here and expand that.
It took me a while to figure it out. At first, I was looking in the circus tent there, and I was trying to figure, that's all plumbing, and I was just...
That's, yeah, the DeBoks to the...
It just took a while to figure it out, that's why I had to ask that question, and all they're doing is adding on to it. I said, boy, that's pretty elegant. Boom, nicely done.
Wouldn't it depend a lot on how old the original part is?
I mean, the system needs to be functioning in good operation, and so...
If it's a D-Nite system, it's going to be pretty...
Pretty, yeah. Yeah.
It was the first one approved.
It was one of the first ones, is what the Health Department referred, stated in their referral, so it is, you know, it is a few years old, but they're going to be going through this process, and the Health Department requirements of that, it'd still be openable.
I have a question for Kevin, again, it's septic system, but I'm curious, okay?
Just curiosity, yeah.
When these RUC systems were first put in, they were supposed to be monitored, I think, four times per year, but I don't know how long that requirement, is it still being monitored?
So my understanding relative to RUC systems is that there is a quarterly reporting requirement for the first two to three years, and as long as it's then operating on a consistent basis, that reporting goes down significantly. I don't know exactly how often it is, but I know the quarterly reporting is only for the first, like, two years of existence. This was inspected with a Title V report when it was purchased by the Toners just about a year and a half ago, so it's still in good working order.
Yeah, because I don't know how long those RUC systems keep on going, but I do know they are good, really good system.
Paul?
Yeah, just clarification, this accessory apartment is in the barn, is that correct?
Yes. So on the site plan, this is the barn we're referring to here, so this portion over here is going to be torn down and rebuilt, because right now it's just garage space, it's going to be rebuilt as part of the habitable space, just that eastern portion of it, the rest of the barn is remaining, and that's what we're talking about. Now, if you look at the proposed renderings, this is the area I'm talking about right here that's going to be rebuilt to be, that's where the bedroom will be located. What you see there is the front doors, will actually be a very small storage space. The door on the left is the access to the stairwell up to the second floor, the door on the right, which has no access to the apartment, and the door on the right is the access to the apartment.
Well, nice project, and nicely presented, thank you. Simply appreciate getting the photographs of the house. That's it for business with applicants. Now we come to our discussion items. We want to ask the planning staff to give a decision.
Shall we draft a positive motion?
Yes.
For the next meeting?
Yes.
Very good.
And that's the May 28 hearing?
May 28.
Wonderful. That works so well, because we'll go into the ZBA on the 6th, so, wonderful. Thank you all very much, we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. So the first item up for discussion, and we've got four of them, is our Shiverx Pond celebration. Paul, that was really marvelous, and I think we've got a presentation. Thank you.
So I know that Paul, for the record, Jed Cornock, Town Planner, I know that Paul is a very humble man, and would probably have not come tonight had he known that I was going to surprise everyone with the playing of the video. Now, I apologize in advance because the audio isn't awesome, in fact, it's very difficult to hear it because it only comes out of the computer, so what I'm going to do is just skip the ad, turn down the volume, and sort of show everyone the coverage that FCTV had of the Shiverx Pond, the Arbor Day celebration. So as you know, this was held on April 26, here, I can maximize the screen. And so Peter McConity and the DPW folks, especially Jeremiah Pearson, our tree warden and superintendent of Parks and Grounds, did an amazing job planting a variety of different plants and shrubs and trees, and as you can see, that was quite an event, and a number of speakers came to the podium to summarize all of the work that's gone into the work at this park. So this is the park that's adjacent to Shiverx Pond and will be part of the overall improvement project, which will look out over the new fishing platform. And so, as you can see, folks gathered, and there was quite a lot of activity. Jeremiah brought in a number of volunteers, notably folks from, I forget, Paul, the school that he brought them in from, but as you can see, there was quite a few people there, you know, getting their hands dirty and doing a lot of heavy lifting. So we had Nancy Taylor, Chair of the Select Board, say a few words. Paul was up at the podium, said a few words, as did I. Jeremiah stood and said a few words, a few others, but the event was terrific, we had wonderful weather, and included in your packet is a newspaper article that the Enterprise put together and published in the paper, as well as a lot of the images that, as you can see, here, I'll just pause this, I was not quick enough, but a lot of the images that Paul put together and put in the display area at the park, and you can see that at the, well, here it is, right here. So a structure here that has a lot of information about Shiverx Pond. So I just wanted to take a few minutes and, you know, thank Paul for all his hard work. Note that work is still underway and will be for quite some time, but I think the folks who attended the event walked away very impressed with the amount of work and effort that's gone into this project.
Paul, is there anything you'd like to say now?
Yeah, I would. Noel Anon wrote the article in the Enterprise, which was nicely done, and she was up against a deadline, so I wrote a letter to the editor outlining some of the next steps and the other people involved, because there was a really community effort. If you don't mind, I'll read a section from that Paul letter. Arbor Day was organized by Jeremiah Pearson, Superintendent of Parks and Trees Division in Department of Public Works. It was an exceptional event, well-attended, it's part of the implementation of their long-planned project along Cathy Lee Bates Road. The effort in preparing the park by Mr. Pearson and his staff at DPW should be appreciated by everyone in town. His staff not only removed extensive invasive plants and trees from the site, but also planted many native species, and will continue with more plants along a proposed path with benches. The next part of the project installation of a viewing platform in the pond opposite the park. The permits have been received, and the intent is to finalize this portion later this year. The efforts of DPW staff and many others should be acknowledged, including the Falmouth Community Preservation Fund, the Massachusetts Department of Environment Recreation, the 300 Committee Land Trust, Lawrence School, Okoye Bay National Estuary Reserve, Falmouth Conservation Commission, and the Upper Region, Upper Cape Regional Technical High School, who have contributed to make this a community project. In addition, the original committee members have continually supported this project over the last several years. The intent is that Shiverx Pond will again be the center of the town's recreation, educational environmental activities, as it has been since the early days of history.
Nicely done. Nicely done. Paul, how many years have you been working on this?
You don't want to know.
I do.
The first presentation of the concept was within the Select Board when, I'm trying to think who the chair was. I can't think of it anymore, it was 10 years ago.
Governor Bradford.
It looks even better now. If you go by it today, it's absolutely gorgeous.
Well, it's still working on it.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to do is get Jeremiah to give me a list of the species that are there, and hopefully we can identify what these plants are, plus it'd be a really educational opportunity for the kids between two schools to see what's there, and people who have gardens want to know what was put in there, so...
Bill took his cellphone out, and he's got a program on it called Picture This, and was identifying various plantings in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Very interesting.
It would be interesting to label them, because they are the plants, or many of the plants, that the Conservation Commission allows you to plant, once you've disturbed anything within 100 feet of water, so that for people who now have that list and want to know what to choose, it would be like a dictionary for them to go there and see it. I hope they label them, but really, it's been a long, long project that you have championed all along the way.
Well, you were on the original committee.
I recall, that's why I know how long it was. So it was, but I was not one of the people who really put my shoulder to it. Vicki Lowell was on the 300 Committee, and she's another person who really should be singled out for getting this done and still keeping at it, and you're still keeping at it till the platform is there. Because now that the park is opened up, people will be able to access the parking over at the Lawrence School during the summer, when the school is in use, so it really is going to help the whole town aesthetically, recreationally, and in pride. Now we can see our pond. You know, one of the best speakers, I thought, was the minister.
Yeah.
From the Congregational Church, who told the story of why it's called Shiverx Pond.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And he was the original minister there, Mr. Shiverx, and apparently, his, I don't know that you would call it a parish, his catchment area, whatever the right name of it is if you're congregational, was enormous at that time, and he was there for a long time. So the pond takes us way, way back, and this really brings it forward. It's just a beautiful project.
Yeah.
I think we should all take pride in it. You spoke really well that day, it was just...
Appreciate it.
Yeah. And the DPW has done a great job on the sidewalks, on the vista pruning along the edge of the pond, it's just, it's good-looking.
Yeah, and there's more to come. You know, at the Arbor Day celebration, they had several of the plantings that they put in, but they also plan a pollinator garden up in this section of the pond, so for the folks who are watching at home, this is the location of the park itself, and as I mentioned, there'll be a pollinator garden here, the fishing platform will be located here, I know we've said it to you folks many times, and then eventually, DPW is going to extend a shared-use path all the way up to Palmer Ave, so extending the sidewalk from its current roughly four to five feet wide to eight feet, so that people who are riding bikes, who are not comfortable on Catherine Lee Bates, can ride up on the shared-use path, they can share it with pedestrians, and the whole idea is to connect the bike path into downtown over that route, and then through and past Shiverx Pond. So it's a marriage of a lot of different and unique locations, so it's great, there's a lot to look forward to.
And good collaboration among all the town departments. Could you point out the parking that the town, I believe, did the town buy that, or did they just lease it?
So the parking that you're referring to is here?
Yes.
It's leased.
And it's leased?
That's leased from the bank, there's 32 parking spaces there.
Yep, down in here are the municipally leased spaces, so...
So the public can drive right in the entryway that looks as if it's just for the bank?
Yep.
And go down to the parking area that now the town provides?
Right.
Actually, there's a curb cut in the lower end of that.
Is there?
They haven't put the curb in when they did some work there, but when they extend Cathy Lee Bates Road up to Palmer Avenue and the bike path, they're going to widen that sidewalk, and they'll put a curb cut in there, so you can get into the parking lot from the lower end.
Okay.
And Charlotte, to your point, so the next phase of the Shiverx Pond improvements is to extend a walkway along the pond itself all the way up to the Lawrence School, so that, you know, in the summertime, potentially, again, it'll be an outcome of a parking management plan that we're currently underway, and I'll talk about later. The idea would be that that might be a nice overflow parking area in the summertime, where folks can park all day long and just walk a path right past Shiverx Pond and get access to the downtown, stay for the whole day if they want, that way they're not parking in a, you know, valued, high-turnover area in the downtown, such as on-street parking or in the, you know, municipal lots that are nearby.
Uh-huh.
So added areas for people to just, you know, come and relax for the entire day. So, lots to come.
What town board has jurisdiction over that piece of land? Is it the Select, Man, Conservation?
Which one? This, the park?
The whole park.
The whole park? That would be the Select Board, I believe, that was given...
Generally, every piece of land has a board that's in charge, I just wondered.
Yeah, I think it was granted, Paul, you might know the history better, the 300 Committee granted it to the town, and I believe it's under the purview of the Select Board, because typically with a Conservation Commission, you wouldn't be able to do anything with it.
The 300 Committee Board voted to grant it to the town to support the park.
Right.
It wasn't just given to the town, it was given as part of the park.
For a purpose.
And I should mention, on the east side, Rotary has worked with the Morse Pond School to put up QR codes along the east side of the pond, where they've worked with the school on an outreach program, and the town is going, has on the list, Dillingham Road Extension in the north, that's on the list to be, I think, number five on the list to be improved with the sidewalk there, so it'll be, the intent is to surround the pond with a trail.
Right, so you'd have a...
Except you won't be able to walk in front of the houses?
No.
No.
Unless you put a boardwalk in there, but no one's proposing that.
No.
Yeah, so the eventual path would be around here, up Hamlin, down Dillingham, and then some sort of configuration down here.
Well, there is a path there now, I think you're allowed to walk on it, it's just not an improved path.
Correct, yeah. And obviously, there's the school, so there's, you know, concerns about accessing school property when it's in session. If you've walked this path, there's a black chain-link fence between Mullen Hall and the path itself. I see us doing the same, or very similar thing, along the Lawrence School, perhaps not enclosing the entire school, because that's quite big, but some sort of barrier.
Well, it was a long time in gestation, but it's here now, and thank you, Paul and Jed, it's really, I've seen a lot of people working on it. Ready to move on?
Yes.
Okay. Our next topic here, regulatory review, this is a Jill Newbauer issue. Did you want to talk on this?
So at your last meeting, Ms. Newbauer stood up at the podium during public comment and suggested to the board that they consider requiring additional documents or plans from applicants.
That's...
Yeah, specifically related to the aesthetics, the architecture of a building, and how it fits in with the surrounding neighborhood, et cetera. So what we've done is we've provided her letter that she gave to the board at that meeting, as well as the newspaper article that happened to be ran in the article, or in the newspaper shortly after that. So we figured we'd add it to the agenda as a discussion item, because you folks were interested in discussing more about it and figuring out exactly what you think might be appropriate to add to the requirements of applicants when it comes to architecture, landscaping, et cetera. Now, as you know, the site plan review requirements within the zoning bylaw currently call for a lot of what she covered, but I do think that there's some value in certain applications having perhaps enhanced architectural renderings that sort of give a zoomed-out version, if you will. But again, that's up for the board to discuss, and if you're so interested, we can modify our regulations or your regulations to include the requirements of that.
And the subgroup that's working on the updates and improvements to the bylaws has this on its agenda, so whatever we would be thinking of could...
What is this group you're referring to?
This is the ongoing working group for updating the bylaws.
Okay, the same bylaw, it's been a group that's been going on for years?
Yes.
It was called recodification, which we completed.
Okay, so I didn't realize it morphed into something else, okay?
Oh, it did, and it was always planned to.
Yeah, so we changed it, because recodification was already completed, it was confusing for folks, so what we did is we changed the working group title to Zoning Bylaw Review.
Who makes up this group?
Who?
This subgroup, I'm not familiar with the components.
It's the same people.
Two members of the Planning Board, two members of the Zerning Board of Appeals, the Building Commissioner, the Town Planner, the ZBA Administrator, Town Council when they can come, and... they can come, and our consultants, unless I'm missing it, someone. And then we have a at-large member.
And the zoning board administrator?
Yep, I think I mentioned that.
Oh.
When was this decided? Did we talk about this, or did this just happen on its own?
No, no. So this was established by Frank Duffy when recodification was happening. And so after recodification, we just changed the name.
So recodification ends?
Yep.
No, it finished. But I think we knew, we talked about it, Jim, as Phase Two.
Correct.
This is Phase Two, and I think you might be more familiar with it and remember it under that name.
Phase Two of recodification.
Right.
So this is still recodification, but now it sounds like we're doing other things than other recodification. We're looking at everything.
I can explain that. When, in recodification, all we were going to do, we didn't want to make changes, we wanted to update it to state law and reformat it so it was easier to use. So it was limited, and indeed, the Attorney General called us on it and said, okay, a couple of these are really changes. But as we went along, we realized there are many things, not many, there are things in it that are outdated, that we don't want anymore, that we would like to change because of issues that have come forward. So this is Phase Two, when we can attend to those things that bubbled up as a result of Phase One.
So this is still recodification, is what it is?
It's Phase Two of recodification.
But aren't we now applying it to other things than recodification? Aren't we talking, aren't we discussing? So it's like this group has taken on a new role and is also, I think it is.
In a way, in a way. So that the first...
That's the way I heard it.
So the technical definition of recodification is to reorganize, reformat, and renumber, right? So you are just...
An update to state law.
Yeah, right. So you're just making some structural changes to the bylaw. Things that came out of Phase Two, right? So during that recodification process, a lot of folks identified issues with the current language in the bylaw and amendments that might be worthwhile pursuing in Phase Two. We are now in Phase Two of that, and site plan review is one of those sections of the bylaw that folks had indicated is outdated and needs to be updated. So we changed the name of the group from recodification, which it technically is no longer. It is now looking at reviewing amendments to the bylaw.
We made that decision.
That was mine through town council's advice. Because the working group technically advises me now to then advise you of changes that might be necessary or changes that the group has necessarily, I guess, put forward for your consideration. So that's the process. The group meets, they then advise me, and then I advise you.
So this is still recodification?
To, yes, it's the second phase. But again, because...
It sounds like it's become a permanent board to me.
It certainly could go on a long time.
We hope that it won't be, but there were several sections of the bylaw, a total of 13 or so, that needed to be updated. And so we've made our way through four of them, and so we have some more work to do, parking being one of them. The parking section of the bylaw needs to be updated, and so we're working with our consultants to update that.
The only thing that bothers me is, because I didn't attend these meetings, sometimes the decisions already to be made comes to this meeting, we talk about for five seconds, everyone else knows that one's done. I found that sometimes I feel like I don't know what's going on because I'm not attending these meetings too. And I feel it's unfair burden to say I have to start attending all these sub-meetings to stay up to date, but that's just the way I feel.
How can we address that?
Well, we could have talked about extending this on to take on more responsibility instead of just doing it.
But we, each time something came to the board on recodification about whether it was time to go to town meeting, and it was a tricky thing, would say, oh, Phase Two, Phase Two, don't you remember that? We just put it off? This is...
But it sounds like this is permanent. It's, I never heard, I never thought site plan review would be Phase Two. I think, okay, go ahead. I'm also, I'm done commenting on it. I'm just telling you how I feel. It just felt like I was left out of this decision. Because you guys made it on your own in this subcommittee.
It didn't feel like a decision.
It did to me.
Part of the reason, part of the reason that it had to transition was because Frank Duffy retired, as you know, from being town council. He then became a ZBA member, so it sort of changed the format of the group. Then the assignment essentially was that the working group would advise Maura O'Keeffe, our new town council, who was not really attending the zoning bylaw review committee meetings or the working group meetings, it was more the associate town council. So to clean it up, and because I am your administrator, essentially your staff, they delegated the sort of reporting responsibility from the working group to the town council's office to me directly, because then I would provide it to you. So we felt like it was more efficient that way.
I think what we need to do, because I'm sure Jim feels strongly about it and it's probably well-founded, is be more careful about bringing things back to the board and really discussing them before they go forward.
Yeah, so, I mean, just so everyone's clear, so on the planning page, we have a number of different projects that are currently underway, which this one's going to load. So we, again, as part of Phase One, was the reformatting, reorganizing, doing all that effort of giving it a new structure. Identified within that first phase were elements that we needed to take care of in Phase Two. So here is the Phase Two information. These are the members of the working group who regularly attend. And then what we've done is we've provided links to the videos, because all of these meetings happen over Zoom so that we can record them and then post them not only to here, but to FCTV for folks to see what we've talked about, to participate if they so choose in the next meeting. We post all of our agendas here, and then this is the roadmap, if you will. So these are all of the items that have been identified as part of the Phase Two work. And what we did is we sort of itemized and categorized where we thought we might be able to tackle them for town meeting, because there's a lot of work that goes into making zoning bylaw changes. So as you can see, and this is, this one's a little old and it needs to be updated, but as an example, in fall of 2024, we're thinking that we might bring Article 10, a new non-conforming section of the zoning bylaw, forward to town meeting. We were also thinking at the time we might bring some edits to the mixed residential and commercial overlay district. It's an ambitious list. Likely things will move as we meet as a group throughout the process, but you get an idea as to how much work was identified in the first phase, which then needs to be tackled in the second phase. And one of those elements, as we just mentioned, is site plan review. That's the sort of connection to the conversation that you're having about what do we require from an applicant who's coming forward for site plan review? Will we require a landscaping plan? We require a site plan? We require building elevations, because you need to see what the building's going to look like in relation to the site. But I believe that what Ms. Newbauer was suggesting is to sort of bring us back to the agenda item, is that when you think about a building being constructed, say, at the Falmouth Plaza, a larger picture of how it relates to the other buildings in the area is essentially, I think, what Ms. Newbauer was getting at, and perhaps providing some more detailed renderings of the elevations and the architecture.
That I totally agree with. It was just this working group thing here. I feel like I can't keep track of what they're doing.
Yeah, so...
Seems like it'd be a special planning board subcommittee that gets things done, advisory board, and brings them toward the board, and...
That is what happens.
Yep.
But I thought we approved that for Mr., you know, the code. I didn't think we decided to do on everything we're going to do. And that's, so now it is for everything we're going to do, not just the code.
No, it's not for everything. It's for the list that Jed just showed you. And it's been posted, and we've discussed it.
So I'll go back to it.
Okay, I didn't realize site plans fell into that, but...
You know, I know it seems like a submarine at work, and it's just, you know, poke this little telescope up.
Looks like it.
But it, it's just that it's, it takes so long to do this.
I'm all done. I just made my comments. I've got to make them again when it comes up.
So one of Bob's, you know, bylaws that he's been asking for us to review is the transfer of development rights, you know, albeit it's low on the list, and it's not because we don't like you. It's just simply that, that's a challenging section to not only understand, explain, but then amend.
Yeah.
And some of the elements have come up before, but with parking and loading, I mean, we are, we have an outdated parking bylaw, and we really need to get to that and provide some flexibility, because, you know, the kinds of development that you're looking to provide in the downtown are challenging with our current parking regulations. So there's a lot of work to be done, and this group is very helpful, because it's a lot of minds who use the bylaw on a regular basis. And so it's a, it's a great discussion, but it does, to Charlotte's point, it takes some time, because there's good questions that Perko laid up to the top, and you really need to address those before we bring them forward to the planning board at a public hearing and then go to town meeting. It's important that we get it right at the beginning.
So could we now, John?
Yes, let's go forward.
Yes, let's discuss Jill Newbauer's idea. And it was very welcome when she presented it, because we were struggling with it over the Chase Bank proposal, where we wanted to know, how is this going to fit in with all the rest that you've got planned there, Kimco? And they're not telling us, so it's difficult for us to understand and evaluate their proposal. And what her proposal is, that we would add to the site plan review that for maybe all or only some would have to think about that, projects, particularly ones that are going to be located in congested areas, that the, there be elevations that show how it fits in with its neighbors, the immediate abutting neighbors, or that would have to be determined. How much do you have to show? And it turned out, New York City, the only one I've gotten any information on, New York City has long required that the renderings show from all four angles the building as it will fit in with its neighbors, so that you can see that. And in addition, they, and she mentions this, they have to bring in what they call a materials board that has samples of what they're going to be putting on the surfaces. And there may be other things that they require also, but those are standard requirements. So we, in asking for this, we're not going to be out there alone asking for something onerous. What do people think?
I think that we have a very intense site plan review, as it is. We're talking more about design review right now, in my opinion. And I think that when we go to a site, if we go to the site, you can picture what else is already there, because it's already there. You're talking about something that Kimco might build someday. We can't, we can't put that in an equation, and we can't ask the bank people to design something for Kimco that may never happen. But as you go to look at a proposed building or structure, you can see what's to the left and to the right and across the street and the back. I mean, we're all, we're all very experienced people, and not that everyone on the board in the future will be all experienced, but in my opinion, if there was a structure, say, like what's being built on Main Street now, four stories high, 110 apartments, that is difficult to picture with the neighborhood. After it's built, it'd be a good, be able to perceive it, but only on very rare occasions would I think it would be necessary to have an applicant do what she's suggested that we do.
Bob, what do you think?
Yeah, I think it depends on what the rest of the environment is. If it's an ugly environment, are we going to keep everything ugly? Or are we going to allow something to change, and maybe others will change along with it? So I don't think it would necessarily help in that way. I think a general idea, a Google Earth shot of the neighborhood that shows buildings, maybe, you know, streetscape, something like that, especially on Davis Straits, where you have the plaza, and then you have the small houses and the other, smaller business on the other side. It might be helpful, but I don't know. I think it can get a little onerous, you know, for us too.
Jim?
I'm very much in favor of it. I think we should do it. I believe that we do not do site plan review for residential properties. We focus mainly on our commercial properties that are on our main roads, and I think there's nothing more important than understanding it, and I'm totally in favor of this level of detail that she's required. I've actually requested it in the past. We used to require elevations and other times when I was...
Of adjoining buildings?
Yeah.
Really?
But she's going much different. I mean, sometimes we've even waving elevation just going on a sketch. I really like the idea of materials boards, the whole level. We are making decisions that are for the next 50 years for our town, and we only make them on our main roads in the center of our town, and I think nothing could be more important, and I really think her suggestion is good.
Okay. Mine is yes and no. It's, I have difficulty in envisioning the distance between buildings and what it's going to look like. If somebody plops something 10 feet from a line and the other one is 10 feet from a line, what does 20 feet look like if it's a four-story building, if it's a three-story building? You've got shadow effects coming into play here, too. And I don't know how all of that is going to play out. That's what, where I would find utility on this. Yeah, materials board, fine, but are we, do we want a materials board so we limit? Do we want a materials board so we can see how it fits into what's already there, so we have something all the same? What, what do we want? I think that's the basis of my yes and no. What do we hope to attain by making any changes in what we're requiring? For me, the elevations, it's going to be how the heights fit in in that particular area. Is something being swamped?
Paul?
I think most of the architects, developers, do look at the surrounding building and see how it fits in. I think generally they do that. But having a little more information might be helpful, and this is going to be particularly important, I think, as we start filling in density and filling in spaces that are open now. It's going to be very important to look at what impact it has on the surrounding areas. So I think a level of detail is worthwhile. It does not be onerous, and it's the kinds of things I think they do generally, but it's not necessarily presented as part of the site plan review.
Yeah. I like the idea, but I'd really think that it needs to be limited. I think John's correct, that for the most part, going on a site visit allows us to see where it's going to be and to be able to visualize it better. Also, unless a project is really asking permission from us and other boards to have a different kind of height limit or change any of the setbacks, to change the way it relates to the buildings around it, then there'll be no need, because those limits have been set in order to maintain visual harmony. But if you're going to be breaking one of those, it would be good to know how it would fit in. So I don't think it'd be that difficult to find a way to restrict the need to provide elevations that included the surrounding buildings. You'd be able to figure out how to limit who needs to produce them and where you need them, because your idea, Jim, that it's on the main, our main business areas, probably true. It could maybe be limited by, by just the zones that we work in. It certainly would not apply to, well, maybe it could, apply to other zones. People are complaining at times about McMansion-ization, you know? Houses now much, in much different scale than others in their neighborhood.
But we don't have a say on residential, and that's...
But, well, in a sense, we do, because they are abiding by bylaws, and bylaws originate here.
Correct, but they don't bring their site plan to us.
No, but we could limit it by the bylaw if we wanted to. This doesn't ask us to do that, and it does, and it...
I'm not anxious to going after all the residential designs, but I really feel that in our downtown and our main roads, basically our business-owned properties, it is important.
What would you think of that limitation, John?
Which one?
Business areas and commercial buildings.
I feel the same way. I mean, I mentioned a four-story building, but that's not, and it's not in our purview. That's a 40B building, so we don't have a say in it, but I'm just saying, any large structure, maybe, but we're talking about...
But I think if we were to require in site plan review that they produce drawings that show neighboring buildings, the massiveness of, say, Liberty Green would be evident to me. that show neighboring buildings, the massiveness of, say, Liberty Green would be evident immediately to anybody looking at it.
If we had anything that massive, then I, I think we could ask for that. But we're, we're starting off with a bank, this one-story bank in the middle of a plaza that's ugly as sin, and we've, we've all wanted to have changed for 20 years now, and they're making a change. And really, I mean, if you can't picture that, I don't, I don't need drawings of every other structure on that plaza. I don't need that. And, I don't mean to hit the microphone, but, you know, the site plan, the site plan review is so, I don't want to say onerous, but it is onerous. There is a lot to it. We're really talking about design review here, in my opinion.
We are definitely talking about that.
And, and we ask, what color are they gonna do? They, they bring in the, the colored sketches. I mean, whatever we ask the applicant does, but I, I think it's more than is required. That's how I feel about it. I don't, I don't think it would help me a lot.
Hmm.
I find doing section, and I don't know if she uses section, I, I see section as a crosscut
Yeah.
of a building. To do that of the neighboring buildings as well, like, you know, I think, I think that's a bit much.
I think that's very much a bit much.
I, I mean, I, like I said, I can see a streetscape. You see it all the time. Just the, the frontage, maybe several 300 feet on either side of something like that. I don't think that would be that hard for them to do. There's probably plenty of information in software that would generate that just from photographs, but.
What I, what I would like would be to think about, all of us think about an example of a site plan review we've done in the last three or four years, where you think it would have been added value.
I think it would have been added value on the senior housing building that's going in across from Guskanti.
But that's a 40B.
They come here first. We get to comment on it.
And we did comment, and they made, and they made changes.
I think seeing something, not just reading numbers, but seeing something, changes minds. And it would all the way through the review process. So let me see, if there've been any other large building where you'd want to know that. There's the Police Academy Building out on Technical, what's that called? Technical Park?
In the tech park, there's all woods around it.
It is, but a building that size.
Yeah.
Right. And we would say, well, okay.
Nice picture of trees, that's all we get.
If it's an isolated building, and then maybe you don't need it. I think you could limit it to ones where it would be useful. If it were going to be anywhere downtown, anywhere downtown, not just on Main Street, but on the intersecting streets that we all use to cut across, to cut across town, we'd definitely want to know. Because a big building, and buildings are getting bigger, is going to change the character of the downtown.
Well, if they go by our bylaw, they can't get any bigger than what's in the bylaw. You're, some of these structures are not in our purview. We, we cannot deny them.
But we can comment on them.
Well, we did comment on them, and they made changes.
And some of them, we will be able to. They won't all be 40Bs. There's no reason to think that they would be. Suppose an Aldi's wanted to add a, a second story onto that building. That wouldn't be a 40B.
Suppose who?
Aldi's, the one that's Belzecian owns.
Christmas tree shop.
Christmas tree. Or that whole section of the strip mall.
Then we would, we would be able to comment on it. We'd have a design review.
Well, it sounds as if the board's divided on it. We've got one, two, three, three and a bit. Would you say that's fair? And you saw some instances. Why don't we see something in writing and react to that?
If I may.
And some examples.
Okay, and some examples.
So in Ms. Newbauer's letter, she indicated willingness to work with us
Mm-hmm.
to develop a list of things that might be helpful.
Well, she apparently hasn't looked at what we already require, because she's listed some things we do.
Correct.
Right.
So with your permission, if you'd like, I can reach out to her and schedule a meeting and chat with her and maybe develop that list. And, you know, it's been on our list to bring forward to you some changes to your site plan review regulations.
Mm-hmm.
And so we've just been waiting for a good time to finish all that up and whatnot. That might be a good opportunity to fold in some of those edits if you are so inclined.
Yeah.
So if you'd like, I can reach out to her, and we can have a conversation about what that might look like.
I think if we had the list that we currently use and then
Right.
in red, interject what she's suggesting.
Yeah.
Just to see, you know, how many we actually do have. It might be one or two suggestions that she's put forth that we'd be adding, so.
So this is acceptable to go forward in that way, Jim?
Yeah, it's acceptable, but I'd like to, if I could ask, to maybe a little add to it. Over the years, I've heard various difference of opinion on what our roles are in design review. And in fact, sometimes we were told we had no role at all. And yet, as of late, I've heard that maybe we do have a much bigger role, and it's done in other towns. And I don't think we're all operating with the same set of rules, because I don't think it's been made clear. So maybe a definition of exactly what we can do, because I can remember previous town planners saying, no, no, that's not our job, to find out, oh my God, yes, it was, because it was just their opinion, and everyone's welcome to have an opinion. But maybe we should get a legal opinion on what really is our role, so John and I aren't disagreeing on it. Either it's our role or it isn't. Because I think it is. I'm not sure, but I'd like to, as this subject matter goes, it might be to get that clarified as well.
Sure. Yeah, we could do that. Clarify it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Didn't our consultants say, though, that the way our bylaw is written, we don't have teeth?
Yeah, I think, I think there's some holes in it, if you will, but there is some language in there that would lend itself to potentially being used to have some teeth.
We can, we can rework the wording a little bit so that there are teeth.
Yeah.
That's my point. I've heard this, whether or not the teeth are there for a while.
Hence the reason to.
If you take a look at the state law, the opportunity to comment and have an impact on the design appears to be there. Most state laws created by legislatures have some ambiguity to them, because they are compromises by the time they're made. And it's into that gray area the rest of us march and where we operate. If we wish to have, isn't that true?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Gray, gray.
And if we wish to have a role in preserving the character of the town, we are going to have to read it in such a way that we can definitely reject ugly buildings. Now, defining ugly is really hard. You only know it when you see it. And that's John's point.
But you gotta see it to know it. And that's why we should see it.
That's John's point. Where are the examples? But let's see if we can get some language to begin with that will kind of, you know, bring our, our conversation down to the ground for a little bit. But expecting certainty in the reading of a piece of legislation is not a good idea. It won't be there.
Okay.
Okay. Next topic. So we're gonna do that. Do you want to put any kind of timeframe around that? One more thing to push you on?
Not especially, no.
No. No, but, but please let Ms. Newbauer know.
I will, of course.
That we do want to do something. We just don't know what yet.
Yeah, and I, I would suggest that perhaps what I can do, and what Melinda and I can do, is during our planning department report, just sort of report progress as we go. We're just, like I said, we're trying to find a good time to bring forward those regulations, because things have just been super busy.
Right.
Plus, we're, we're running up to Fall Town Meeting, if it, if, dare I say it, we'll be preparing for zoning amendments again, so.
Well, and you have just reminded us that we put off doing Article 10, that was, that was the one on the, what you call it?
Non-conforming.
Non-conforming law. It was all ready to go. Basically restating what state law and case law is, just so it'd be there and people could use it. And we didn't do it. We thought it'd be too hard, but it's ready. So we could do that. Okay, next thing, planning department report.
So if I may, I'll just go to the podium. So we're very excited to announce the beginning of our, of the short-term rental, the downtown parking management and wayfinding plan projects. So as an introduction, as you all know, these two projects are similar in a way, because they cover the same study area, which is our downtown area, generally speaking, from Locust Street on the west all the way out to Gifford Street. Wayfinding goes a little bit further, goes up to Davis Straits and beyond. But the main point I'm trying to make is that, generally speaking, the downtown is the focus of not only looking at our current parking situation, but also our signage situation, and developing improvements based on what we see and what the public has to offer. So importantly is our, and I put a copy of the flyer in your books for this evening. We have this event coming up, and I'm just gonna zoom in so that FCTV can cover it. We have an open house on Thursday from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Herman Room. And this is an open house style, so it's meant to allow folks to come in for as long as they'd like, within those two, two-hour periods, ask questions from our consultants, learn more about the projects, provide input about parking in the downtown and issues that you may or may not have experienced, and then provide some input on strategies that we might want to consider in the long term. So we're, on this day, encourage anyone who's interested in parking to come down to the Herman Room, stay for as long as you want, five minutes, 10 minutes, half an hour, two hours, whatever you'd like. You can stay for as long as you can. Importantly on this flyer is this QR code. So we have a public survey that's running right now. I think we talked to our consultants this morning. There was over 340-something responses already. We publicized the, the survey, I think, two weeks ago. So it's incredibly popular. We're hoping to not only match, but hopefully, you know, get more survey responses than the Transportation Management Committee received back in 2020, '21 time period, where they did a very similar effort surrounding the downtown circulation and improving things down here. So we're very excited. We want to announce the fact that we're having this open house. We want to encourage folks to fill out the survey. If a digital survey doesn't work, we have copies of the paper survey at the planning office. Anyone can come by at any time, fill one out, leave it, either leave it with us or mail it back to us at, at some point in the future. So this is all about, how do you use the downtown in terms of parking? Where do you park? Are there issues? Tell us what you think, that kind of thing. So we're very excited for that. We're gonna start our data collection on the very same day, so we're hoping that the rain is just showers. But we'll be counting the number of parked cars within the downtown area this Thursday, and then again on Saturday. Give a sense for off-peak time periods. And then in July, we're gonna be coming back, doing that data collection again, to sort of compare what it looks like in the spring and what it looks like in the summer. And because staff is doing most of the data collection, we're gonna be able to do that years to come, and we'll be able to create trend lines based on same data collection technique, same methodology, different time periods, but we'll be able to compare and contrast over the course of several years. So I think it's really valuable. It's something that, to my knowledge, the town's never done. And so we're extremely excited about this event. So I wanted to announce that. Also, make note of the fact that the wayfinding plan, and so I'll just scroll down here. Wayfinding plan is, as I mentioned, it's a larger study area. This is the area that goes from Locust Street, the bike path essentially, in the west, all the way over to Davis Straits and Dillingham area in the east. The main goal of this is to identify the existing signage that's in place, just like the parking. Identify the issues, come up with some strategies to improve it. Are there ways that we can connect folks from the bike path to the downtown? Highlight local businesses on these boards. And then, importantly, show them where parking exists and where perhaps extra parking exists, where shuttles might happen. You know, ideas in the future that can make the situation in the summer a little less congested in the downtown. Because I can imagine, I hear from a lot of locals who say, I just avoid downtown in the summertime because it's so busy. And, you know, my experience, I've seen it. A lot of that busyness is related to people trying to find a good place to park. And sometimes you're just looking and looking and looking because you don't know where the other ones are. And it might just be as easy to go into a public lot and be able to park for a couple of hours, and it's a short walk to a restaurant or a candy shop or what have you. So it's all about identifying what the issues are and trying to solve them. So this is our wayfinding effort, combined with our parking effort. This summer will be very, very busy. That's why I mentioned, you know, not having a timeline on the previous item, because this is going to absorb a lot of our time. But the idea is to wrap all of this up by the end of, of the summer, early fall.
Jed, what are the likely products in the end to be? Changes in bylaw, changes in signage?
Potentially. So, so it's, I mean, both of these efforts will have a final plan. In that will be an implementation and a number of strategies. It could include amendments to the bylaw. It may include changes to the types of signs that we have, and the language that we use on the signs. So for example, when you come out of a public parking area, you might be able to have one of those, I call it a ladder sign, where there's identified a number of local businesses, and they have arrows. So if you want to go get an ice cream, boom, go left. If you're looking to go get a, you know, a coffee or a tea or what have you, you go left or go right. The point being to direct people. And then, we would then have to institute either a capital project to, you know, add those signs, or zoning bylaw amendments that might change the zoning, which would allow for potential flexibility with the parking.
And this isn't gonna get into site plan review parking? This is strictly just parking lot and street parking?
Parking lot, right. So one of the strategies might come out of it would be, for, for example, using or harnessing technology. You know, there's a lot of cities, even small cities like New Bedford, they have apps that regulate what types of parking areas and where they are. And some apps even go as far as to give you the usage, so you, you know, you can tell right on your phone whether or not that parking lot's still has spaces available.
Yeah.
Now, again, that's, you know, more of a city-type environment. But those are some of the ideas that have been floating around to make things more efficient.
They do it for road congestion.
Exactly.
You know.
Right. So that's the idea. And so it's a big effort Thursday, this week, Herman Room, Public Library, come one, come all. Tell us what you think.
It'll be interesting. Right. And they are keeping you busy.
Very busy.
That's your question.
Paul?
Is this a presentation of planning department or are consultants involved? They're not mentioned here.
So it will be primarily our consultants who will be at the library. I will be in attendance for one of the sessions. I still have to figure out when exactly I'll be there.
Who's the consultant?
Stan Tech Engineering. Stan Tech. We were granted a, well, we were awarded a $25,000 grant through the One Stop for Growth Grant Funding Program. And part of that is they select a consultant who's pre-approved. Stan Tech Engineering was selected, and they are doing the data collection analysis and then final report writing for us.
And you are actually going out collecting data yourself?
I am, yep. Yep.
You made reference to the Transportation Management Committee that I was on for several years. We spent an enormous amount of time, and particularly the Bike and Pedestrian Committee wanted direction signs from the bike path to downtown and elsewhere. Hopefully, they come up with some kind of standard design that fits in with Falmouth. But aside from that, the wayfinding's a big issue. As you know, they paved Lakeview Avenue where I live, and there's a school there. And it's amazing, the trucks that come through there and buses. There was a dump truck filled with debris. There was a, just this week, there were two very, very large trees on a huge trail. It hit all the canopy going down Lakeview Avenue. I don't know where they were going, but they turned left onto Palmer Avenue, onto, yeah, Palmer Avenue. And the traffic that goes along there is pretty enormous. Now, the Traffic Advisory Committee put up signs that say, no through truck, school zone, but there's no enforcement.
Yeah.
So if there's no enforcement, where are you going with this?
Yeah.
I think it's a big issue.
It's certainly a challenge, because, I mean, you know, it goes without saying, but if you zoom out, I'll just do the, because I think aerial or the map is, is a better representation of the issue at hand. So 28, as you know, comes down like a horseshoe. And a lot of the through traffic who is coming down and wants to continue on 28 uses Catherine Lee Bates, uses Jones Road, uses Lakeview. There's a lot of cut-through traffic from east to west and west to east. So, you know, there's some benefits in that design, but there's also some, some cons. So Paul, I think you're describing one of the, one of the issues, is that, you know, obviously, if, if a vehicle's coming down this way, instead of going all the way down and around, they're just gonna cut across. And, you know, at times, Jones Road is backed up, so Lakeview becomes. And, you know, at times, Jones Road is backed up, so Lakeview becomes an alternative, Catherine Lee Bates becomes an alternative. And each one of those streets has their issues. Catherine Lee Bates has a, has an elementary school and a library. Lakeview is a neighborhood. Jones, you can only, you know, fit so many vehicles through that intersection at Gifford Street. So everywhere you turn, there's, there's some sort of issue with the, with the road network. And it's, you know, just the fact that it's, it's an older road network. But rest assured, DPW has a lot of improvements underway to try and fix those things. But, you know, I think one of the particular issues, especially in the summertime, and I'm sure we all experience it when we go on vacation somewhere, we're unfamiliar with the area, and one of the major things we want to do is go see things. Well, in order to do that, you need to park your car, because generally speaking, you drive. So if you're wandering around trying to find parking, which my family and I generally do, we're part of the problem instead of being part of the solution. So if there's a way to just get right to the parking area, that you have easy access to places, and then when you get out of your car, there's communication as to where those places are, there's solutions right there.
It's too bad the Steamship Authority has taken up so much of the likely places to put big parking lots and arrange for shuttles.
Yeah. Yeah, it's certainly.
We're, we're solving the Vineyard's parking problem.
Yeah. In a way.
There's a parking lot by the bike path. I am very familiar with it because it's in my backyard. My, I both live and work in this plant, so I'm right in the middle of it.
Yeah.
I notice very often, at 8:00 in the morning, 10 cars all coming down, parking in, getting into a van, going down to Woods Hole.
Yeah.
They've turned it into a satellite.
Right.
Thing, and we thought it was for our bike path. And I don't know what group's doing this, but they're definitely organized because I watched them come in all together with a van. They get in one van and they, they park 10 cars there. And they do it all along. And they fill up the parking lot very quickly, and it's definitely some Woods Hole group doing it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I've, I've heard people doing that at the Falmouth Plaza.
Right.
The Walmart lot.
They do it everywhere.
They do it everywhere.
But this is a town lot, not a private lot.
Right.
Well, they lost the dome, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it speaks to another issue that's, that's out there. It's that, you know, steamship.
They could be.
Likely it's the steamship. Availability, right? And then the shortage of parking that's down in Woods Hole. So people are finding alternatives anywhere they can find them. And then added to that is the population that triples in the summertime. So it's a lot of different factors that happen in the summer. So we're very excited to see the difference in the data and to get a sense for what that looks like. But to your point, you know, you mentioned that I'll be out doing the data collection. The reason for that is because what I want to be able to do is use that experience with the data collection and then train future data collectors in the future to say, "This is what we want you to collect, be it in March, be it in September, be it in December, whatever it may be," so that I don't have to participate anymore. But it's important to be able to be out doing the first set of that, so that I can then train others to do it for us on off-times, whenever we want it to collect it. As long as it's done the same way each time, we can compare and contrast.
I'm glad to hear that explanation. It sounded like some sort of demotion.
It happens all the time.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Our next subject for discussion. Is there more to your report?
There is not. But while you talk about perhaps the next agenda item, I'm gonna man the computer and sort of show folks what you might be talking about.
Okay. Next, we have committee reports. Paul, do you have reports?
No, I do not. I'm attending the Water Quality Management Committee, but I do not have a particular report.
Okay.
I will next time.
John?
Oh.
May I finish?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you did.
Every time I go, we spend more than an hour on urine diversion.
Captured.
I'm not gonna repeat it here, but every meeting, it goes on for an hour, an hour and a half. So that's why I don't have a report.
They took up quite a bit of time at town meeting.
And divert your report.
Right. My sympathies. So I had something I wanted to report on. We, I want to tell you about the first meeting of the Short-Term Rental Working Group, which you were here when we made up the composition of the committee. It met right here. You apparently did, at some meeting at your place, find a representative for the private industry rental group. And she's well-spoken. She's definitely going to be looking after your, after your interests. And we, it was not as well-attended as I had hoped it would be. Not, not many members of the public turned out to comment on it, but some did. And the people who did are the people who have had a bad experience with short-term rentals in their neighborhood, creating a problem with noise, with, with trash, with parking, with all the ways that you can create a problem in a neighborhood. They have. So it certainly confirmed that part of it. But the other part I wanted to comment on and see what you think is because the, the list of issues seems short. I think that we don't have to look at a long horizon for meeting before we can come back to this board with a recommendation. I hope that that's true. But we'll see. So, and there've been, maybe you've read them, court cases? I don't know. Did you see them?
Nantucket, yeah, they're all.
Yeah, they are. Right, so it's a topic everywhere and the, all over Massachusetts anyway, where they're a resort area. And the land courts are finding in favor of maintaining residential zoning. Unless you want to rewrite your bylaws to allow, to specifically allow a commercial use in your residential area, land court will uphold the residential zoning. So that's, that's interesting to know at the outset. It's not an argument anymore. It's now been found, which is good. Melinda is staffing it for us. She's creating a notebook filled with suggestions from other places and the news on it. Paul?
It's my understanding that Nantucket had their town meeting last week, last Tuesday, and they turned down short-term rentals by a two-thirds margin.
Right.
They needed a two-thirds to pass it, and it was just the opposite.
Right.
I don't know the details, but they did vote it down last week.
They turned down the bylaw or they turned down having short-term rentals?
Turned, I understand it turned down having short-term rentals.
That's the way I read that article.
But Nantucket's very different. I mean, the tax rate's very low, but the assessed values are very high, and it's a relatively small population. So it's, it has some really different dynamics.
Does that mean there's no Airbnbs anymore in Nantucket? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know the details. I looked at the, the, I couldn't find their newspaper in the library, so I couldn't follow up on it.
It's online. You can get it online.
I should have looked online. I looked in the library.
I may have misread it, but I believe what it said was that they were going to try to, within a town meeting format, they were going to try to resolve this issue because it cast doubt on all the arrangements that have already been made for short-term rentals for the season. So they want an answer on it soon. Under what conditions might they be allowed? Are they disallowed everywhere? These are unanswered questions that they want resolved quickly. That's what I read. Is that what you saw?
I, I haven't read the article just yet, you know. But we are preparing for the next meeting of the working group, which, let me just check the calendar.
Tomorrow, is it?
No, it would be.
It's the end of the month.
I think we scheduled it for the, it was the fourth Wednesday of the month, so the 22nd.
Yeah.
And if I, if I may, you know, just direct the public's attention to, under the planning department's webpage, we have created a Short-Term Rental Review subsection. Working group members, purpose and scope, meetings. So this is a link to current and future agenda and minutes. We're gonna be posting all of the videos of the working group here on this page. And then Melinda's put together, you know, information that has been shared publicly with the working group, so that everyone is able to participate, even if they did miss a meeting. And so the, the idea here is for folks to, if I may just take another minute, to, and we reminded folks to do this at the working group meeting, but I'll do it for the folks who are watching at home. Under Services, you wanna click on, come on. You wanna click on Alerts or Notify Me. So each one of the working group agendas is posted under the Planning Board's page. So if you sign up for Alerts of all of the Planning Board, so it's very simple, you enter in your email, and then you scroll down to where it says Planning Board. You can subscribe to an email list or to a text message. So anytime an agenda is posted, a meeting or minutes are posted, public hearing notices, anything that is posted through the Planning Board, you get notified. And so what we ask folks to do is sign up through that service, so that when a working group agenda is posted, they'll get an email indicating what time, the date, and the topics that will be discussed that evening. So, and it's very similar to the, we talked about it a little bit before, I'm going a little off-script here, but bear with me. It's the same process for the Zoning Bylaw Review Working Group. We post those public meetings. We post them under the Planning Board. So if you sign up for the Alerts, you'll get notified that this Zoom meeting is happening, and you'll have the Zoom link right on the agenda. So what we're trying to do is, you know, publicize as much as we can, give everyone the information, and give them the opportunity to attend these meetings.
You're showing the FCTV screen that showed Scott McGann.
Yeah.
The Health Commissioner. Of course, he now is responsible for overseeing whether or not people are rental, things that are going to be rented have to be checked by the Health Commissioner to be sure that they're not unhealthy. And he went on at length on the whole issue of enforcement that is very, very difficult to enforce. And one of the reasons it's difficult is if he gets a complaint and can go see them, by the time he gets there, they're gone. They're gone. These are unstaffed hotels. So nobody checks them in, nobody tells you who was there, no one keeps a record of anybody who was there. In effect, no one's responsible, and the owner is out of state somewhere else. So they're, they're completely unsupervised, and it's almost impossible to enforce any rule against them.
Part of the problem with enforcement is we no longer have a zoning enforcement officer. So the problems happen on the weekend. They call Town Hall, there's no one to speak to.
Right.
I thought we had two people when I went down to visit the office recently on that issue, and I believe it was Sirive Boudreau and somebody else that were working in that position.
They don't work weekends, Jim.
Oh, you're right. They don't work weekends. Okay.
Talking about zoning enforcement.
Okay, they don't work weekends. I got you. There's two people that worked during the week.
And I'm not sure that either one of them are full-time. I, I don't know for sure on that.
I, I only know that I went to the office that used to be the zoning enforcement officer. I saw two people sitting there. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
But you're right, they don't do weekends. That's why I do all my illegal things on Sundays.
On Sundays, right.
That's when the calls come into Town Hall, there's no one to answer.
I agree, 100%.
When did, when did we have an enforcement staff?
It's been some years back.
Remember, what was her name?
Ollie.
Ollie, I think. Yeah, I never met her.
She, well, she had a pile of signs out. She, we called her the Sign Nazi. And she would rip down all the illegal signs, and she had about 200 of them stacked up behind Town Hall. When you wanted to get your sign, you'd just come down here and get it.
And put it back up.
Put it back up. No, I didn't put it back up. But she would go after signs like crazy.
Well, she worked weekends also. She took the calls.
Yeah. That's the point.
That's part of the issue.
Working weekends, right.
So that first meeting, Charlotte, you were mentioning that first meeting, it was all about what do we do with rentals currently? What is the current state of affairs?
Yeah.
This next meeting will be geared more towards what are other people doing with short-term rentals? So it will be a review of other communities on the Cape. Do they have regulations that are done by, through the Board of Health, this is a zoning bylaw? And then a review of our current bylaw to give folks assess, you know, an assessment of if we were to enforce something, what would that, what, what could be the closest thing we could use?
John?
Also, my understanding that the people that do register their homes as an Airbnb or whatever program they're going through, that the town collects a substantial amount of revenue from, from those people.
The town does. The, every town in Massachusetts is allowed to charge, I think it's 3% on top of the 5% that the state already charges.
It's my understanding it's like over a million dollars a year.
Yes.
For the town of Falmouth.
And it's dedicated to, I think, housing, isn't it?
I, I think we're getting a little too far off the agenda, but I, I think it's just a, an update on a report of the working group, but those will be future discussions that the working group will, will have. Will have the Director of Assessing come in, give us an assessment of, and a description of what it looks like on the books, you know, what are we taking in? If we were to get rid of it, what would we lose, et cetera? So the idea is to sort of have a holistic conversation about the whole thing, pros, cons, everything in between.
But it was clear from that meeting that staffing would be a very important thing to address, if you wanted to do anything effective. Okay, then. Any announcements?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead.
Voting is next week.
Is it?
I went into Town Hall today, and I didn't know who to vote for, because there were no placards or people harassing me outside. So it was so quiet, I didn't see anybody in there.